Quorum available. Thank you, everyone for attending. Um, as part of the chairman's report, Karen Dean and I both attended this IGA update meeting and we'll be talking about that in some detail. But one of the things that I want you to be thinking about as we go through this is the next next step for us probably is to help identify some funding sources. And it's going to be my recommendation that the committee form two ad hoc committees. And hopefully the finance committee will join you on those ad hoc committees. And basically, one ad hoc committee will look at funding for grants. And the other one will be looking for money for funding via loans. Because obviously, we're not going to have enough money and right away to do all of the projects that we want to get done. But we ought to find some money somewhere to help us along to get more than just, just the monies that we have and be able to especially today with interest rates being so low, it's probably a good time to go out there and get some money to get a bunch of this work done if we can. So be thinking about that in the back of your mind if you wanted to be on one of those ad hoc committees. And we'll talk about that at the end of the day here. All right, any of the ad hoc committee committees have a report to give us today?
Crickets.
Yeah, crickets. Okay, thank you. I didn't think you guys were doing much, but we'll move on to public comment. Haley, do we have any public comment?
I do not have any public comment at this time.
It says my internet connection is unstable and we have to sign out and sign back in.
You know, Karen, I used to have that problem and what I did was I turned my phone off and it helped. She might be gone. All right, no, no public comment. So we will press on consent agenda. Consideration to approve the May 11th, 2020 regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
All right, we have motion. Thank you, Brad.
Second.
Good deal. You got it.
Brad and Paul.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, raise their right hand. Okay, yeah, good. Everybody's in. Thank you. That was four zip with one absent there. Haley. Was Karen had to sign off.
So Karen is on it. Okay.
There we go.
It said I had it. It said I had an unstable internet connection, so I backed out and came back. I'm here.
Yeah, we just passed the consent agenda without you.
Okay.
You want to, do you want to make it five oh Karen? Is that legit?
Yeah, well, I signed in at 10 minutes to two, but for some reason my screen was frozen. So, yeah.
Okay, five oh.
Sorry.
All righty, Karen, I was, I was, I was saying that I had the same problem and I turned off my phone and it kind of cured that unstable internet thing. So.
Well, I could see both of, both you and Jim, but you were frozen. And I couldn't hear anything. So, sorry.
Okay. All right. So we are now in regular business, which receive an update on the investment grade audit. Ray, how do you want to do this? Do you want to give the update or do you want me to do it, Karen to do it? What's your preference?
I'm actually curious to hear what you guys have to update about as you go through there. So. But, but you know, I, I was really, I was really happy with what we talked about. I was surprised at the level of, the level of detail that they've gotten to and we, you know, when staff and I talked about it afterwards, we were, we were happy about how how, you know, how, how quickly they moved the projects through. And we do have some follow up meetings, one of them this week about the the electrical upgrades. So we're going to talk with much detail about that to staff, the staff, to go over the technical issues about that. But I, I think I, you know, just referencing the, the the handout that you gave out there, which is, which is a good handout to give because it gives like the nuts and bolts of what we talked about, but I was, I was really happy about the, the cost estimates, which were actually less than what we had hoped. So we're, we're really happy about that. I think it was like in order of 10 million for wastewater, six million for water. And then 2 million for the other, other upgrades. So yeah, I was really, I was really happy with what we talked about and I, I'm really optimistic that we were going, we're going to get a lot of these projects worked out. So.
Yeah, yeah, so am I. So am I. All right. So Karen, you okay if I go ahead or do you want to try?
Oh, you can go first.
All right. So both of you can interrupt me anytime you want. So my, my first note was that the service upgrade application on upgrading the electrical service, which is what Ray was talking about is moving along pretty quickly so that that should be ready to go as soon as, as soon as we can get a contract together to get that happening. That of course is a, a, a must do because currently the three wire setup is causing us a lot of headaches at the wastewater treatment plant and burn up pumps and motors and that kind of stuff. So that will be one of the first things to get done. They also said that they are able to use the old equalization tanks for process control equalization in the MLE process, which is going to save us a bunch of money. Very happy to hear that. And then they basically went through just about every one of the ECMs kind of a short scope of, okay, this is what it is. This is what we're doing. And this is, this is where we are with each one of these. The engineering seems to be moving along on all of them, which is important because as we get to that 30% or better on engineering, that's when you become a shovel ready project. Okay, which is very important to loan people and to grant people because they want you to be ready to go as soon as they give you money. And so we will be ready to do that. And I'm going to ask Ray to fill in the blanks a little bit in a minute on, on, on the schedule as it goes forward, but they went through each one of the, each one of the ECMs and, and, and you got a breakdown that we sent you on on what new costs were and that kind of thing. I was, I was very happy that, you know, they were, they were looking at things practically and not just, you know, going out there and saying, oh, we're gonna redo the entire plant and da, 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 da. No, they're looking at the things that really need some work done. And they're doing, you know, what I would call pretty much minimal as to what needs to be done. And I'll give you an example of that. The big blowers that they have out there, I think there's three of them out there. They're all ancient and they need to be replaced. Well, instead of replacing all three of them, they decided that they would replace one with a brand new one, put a new drive on it, new motor control and all that, and then just have the other one or two that are left as backup. And so instead of going, you know, and replacing all three, we're just going to replace the one. And then, and we've got the backup if we need it. Whenever we need to do maintenance or repairs on the new. So that's the kind of thing that I was glad to see that they're looking at and, and getting done. They also did a really good job of talking about what they were going to do on the water side. You know, on the well sites, the water fund items. We, we weren't briefed as much on those, but the well sites is basically replacing pumps and, and, and doing upgrades. Same thing with the booster stations, being able to upgrade the pumps and putting variable speed drives on the booster stations so that maintaining pressures and that kind of thing. And the big money on that one, of course, is moving the booster station that's on the rodeo grounds out of the floodplain and moving it 50 yards up the hill and getting it out of the floodplain and at the same time renovating that pump station entire. Domestic water tanks was a big cost. Most of that was Stewart Street tanks and they talked about different options there. One was to build an entirely new tank that would have slightly more capacity than the two existing. And the other one was to take down one of the tanks and put up a new tank and then take down the other tank and put up a new tank and and do it that way and probably come up with additional capacity that way. So they're looking at different options for us and stuff. Remember the Stewart Street tanks had some renovations done about three years ago. And they, they're still not in very good shape. So we're going to have to replace those in the near interim. Less than five years from now, we're going to have to replace both of those tanks. So that's on the water side and, and we can probably talk about that a little bit more later. Let's see. On the, on the other side, they did do a couple of more items that probably stirred some interest. Number one, you saw the diagram of the solar farm that they're talking about. Possibly presenting a, a, a full blown presentation on at some point in time. That's out at the San Simeon wellfields. And we would provide power back into the grid and we would of course get credit for that on our bills as CCSD as a whole. I think that one's kind of out there as far as whether we would get to that or not, but, but still it's, it's something that we, we asked for and, and they were very good about putting a proposal, you know, just kind of giving us an idea of it now, but the full blown proposal eventually will, will tell us, you know, what the output will be and how much payback will be and that kind of thing. So that we'll be able to make a good decision as to whether to go with that or not. They talked about updating the street lights, the LED lights, and they talked about what kind of lights they were able to provide and that kind of thing. And we need to be very sensitive on that to the people that are looking to make us a, what is it, a dark community or something?
Dark sky.
Dark sky. Yeah. Um, and last but not least, they said the Vets Hall lighting would cost about $5,000 and I'd really like to see somebody get that done immediately to get those fluorescent lights out there. So there was a brief discussion on financing and like I said, that's going to be one of our discussion points here. The next step, they went through a thing with next steps. And basically talked about ECM selection, which ones we wanted to do. Subcontractor pricing, firm fixed proposal to us on the ones that we chose. And district approval, funding and on with construction. So those are steps that need to be taken. But Ray, do you know when they're going to come back to us with what final numbers on these things so that we can make some kind of a decision?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure when they're going to give final numbers for all of them. I know, I know it's going to be project specific when we go. When we talk about it technically with the technical staff, like for example, we'll get good numbers when we meet on Wednesday on the on, on the ECMs relating to the, the electrical upgrades. So there's two ECMs there. I know they gave some prices for that, but but depending on the specific project that we pick, I think, you know, we'll be, we'll be able to, to get more specific numbers. Okay. I think it'll be a project specific thing, but I, you know, it's, it's going to be, it's going to happen here in the next month. We're soon, we're going to start meeting on, on, on all these different projects. So.
Okay. So what do you see is our next steps? What does the committee need to do to help you out?
Well, I think like you're going in, I think you're going in the right direction about, you know, we'll, we'll need to start considering funding for it. I know like on our side, we are talking with, with, with some, with a funding group relating to PG&E. So we're, we're working on, on our side with that. And then we're also looking to see, you know, the state revolving fund issues, if there's anything available there. The fact that we're not a disadvantaged community kind of puts us at the lower category, but it doesn't matter. You know, we could still apply. If, if not getting a grant, we can definitely apply for a loan. So that's, that's another step too. So. But yeah, right now, like figuring out ahead of time because by the time like a couple of months rolls around, when, when this goes to 30% design, actually like, you know, within the next four months, we'll, we'll, we'll finish the designs and then we're getting, we're going to need to start figuring out how to finance these projects based on priority.
Okay. Well, that gives us a good timeline. We've got about four months to try to come up with some ideas on how we can get some financing and stuff. So. Karen, anything you wanted to add to what we, what we said so far?
I really don't think you left anything out. You did a pretty good job describing it, but I have to say that I was very impressed with the presentation that they had. They did a, a really thorough job of covering everything. Answered a lot of questions for me on the few things that I didn't understand already. So I'm, I'm pleased. I'm glad we're moving forward with this.
Okay. Questions from any of the rest of you? You know, you weren't able to attend the meeting, but can we fill in any gaps for you as far as what's being done or what's being looked at or anything? Yes.
Oh, Jim first. Yeah. No, Jim, Jim's first. Go ahead. Sorry.
Do I want to go ahead?
Go ahead, Jim.
Can you clarify which tanks we're talking about? You were talking about the water tanks that needed to be repaired.
You're talking about with that almost $2 million are the Stewart Street tanks.
Stewart Street. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, and I just had a question about the solar system. I know that that's kind of in theory or whatever, but wanted to know when three, I see 375 watt panels. And I just wanted to know, is there a reason why we're using 375s? There's different, you know, panels for different types of applications and just kind of wanted to get an idea of where we're at with that.
That was PG&E's recommendation is what I'm thinking.
Okay.
Okay. If you've got some ideas that you would like them to look at, let's get that information raised so we can pass it along.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, I know that there's, there's more, let's say there's more efficient panels, but the, the reality of costs and the rest of that, I was just wondering if there had been any sort of explanation for that. So.
Yeah, don't know.
Cool. I'll send that to Ray.
Yes, Tom. Another question. Yeah. Just to clarify, this is, we're talking about, we're talking to getting to the 30% design point. This is what's covered under the, the initial payment for the audit, right? The IGA.
Yes.
This is, this is a progress report on that essentially. It sounds like we've got about, there's about three or four months to go before we reach that point. Now, the other question I had is though the additional projects that they mentioned, the solar farm, the street lighting and the Vets Hall lighting, is that part of this IGA too? Because that wasn't in the original list of projects that they were going to, or you know, the stuff having to do with the sewer and water systems. Basically, it wasn't in the original list. So is that part of this? Is it covered under the same contract?
Yes, part of it is. Okay. What they did was that our, at our request, they took and, and it was all wastewater initially. We asked them to look a little bit on the water side and we asked them to look at, you know, the, the lighting and, and, and the solar. And basically they came back to us and gave us their ballpark figures on those. And they're not planning on going ahead with those unless we ask them specifically
Okay.
to add those in as ECMs and march forward. I don't know that any of those are going to be on the list or not. Other than the Stewart Street tanks, I'm not sure that any of those are necessarily really high priorities. I mean, it'd be nice to get the rodeo grounds out of the floodplain, but, but Ray, you want to?
Yeah. There's more to the story regarding the rodeo grounds booster station and those pumps do need upgrading as far as energy usage. And not only that, the, the piping is also really corroded in that area too. So, so the, the idea of upgrading that, now why not move it outside of the floodplain? There really, there's a study actually that's related to that, that we needed to do that, that effort. But it kind of, everything kind of fell into place where, you know, we have, we have pumps and piping that need replacement. And let's take the opportunity to, to actually put it in a place that's outside the floodplain.
Yeah, good.
Yeah. Yeah. Apropos that, I have an, it's almost an ancient history question, but is this, is the rodeo pump plant upgrade the same thing they were talking about like almost 20 years ago? When the, when the more, it was part of the moratorium discussion actually, because I think that's been, that's been on hold. If I'm not mistaken, that's a project, is it the same project that was being talked about or has anything been done essentially to upgrade the rodeo grounds pump plant? You know, since then, because it's, it's always been on kind of on the table.
It sounds like it. Yeah. From the history that I've heard here, yeah, that sounds very consistent.
Yeah. So you're finally getting to something that was identified 20 years ago.
Yes.
It's not meant as a criticism. I'm just trying to kind of place it.
Yeah. And, and just as far, I think it's great that we're getting to it. Protecting it. I've seen a lot of stuff as far as infrastructure that, that could have a shadow grid or whatever that might, you know, prolong the lives. I understand, you know, not putting something on for access. But are there any opportunities where we can kind of better protect things and add add that extra layer, if that makes any sense, for in a, we're in a marine environment and seems to, seems to be getting us, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I agree. You know, that, that's, that's definitely part of the design. Like, like for example, like they like even with the new, something that is talked about as far as the electrical upgrade is the new generator and you know, we're, we're actually considering putting it in a, in an enclosure. I mean, right now there is a generator that's in an enclosure right now, but the, the new generator that we're going to need is going to be a different size, but we, we are as far as environmentally protecting it, that's, that's part of the scope.
All right, good. Tom.
One more question. How far back does the floodplain go? How far would you have to move the facility?
Yeah, we only need to move it about 50 yards. It'll probably be like on the other side of the dog park, if you can picture in your mind's eye, like towards the freeway, you know?
Yeah, up the hill, up the hill toward the housing, I guess.
Yeah.
On the other side of rodeo grounds road there. It's all the way across. All right. Anybody else questions? You guys are easy. All right. I proposed that we, that we had two ad hoc committees. Any, any comment on that? Good idea, bad idea? I mean, we would be working with the staff and helping the staff. And, you know, it may entail maybe, you know, finding, hunting down different grants and different funding and then looking at the requirements for those and helping the staff figure out which ones are the best. And, and all this is in preparation so that when Ray is ready to apply for these grants and for these loans, we'll have two people already familiar with it and you guys will be able to say, yeah, we were in on that decision and we think it's the best idea and, and the way to go forward. So we can rapidly get through the approval process on both committees and then at the board level. So, so that's, that's my thinking as to why we should have ad hocks and, and help out the staff on this. Yes, Tom.
What would be the argument against having one ad hoc committee with responsibility for both topics? And a one ad hoc committee of both, of the two committees, a joint committee, but just one committee?
That's fine with me. When, one, one group is looking for free money and the other money, you know, group is looking for money that actually costs us something. So.
Yeah, I was, I was.
I was thinking about separating them, but we don't have to. It can be just one, one ad hoc. Paul?
I was just going to say, I don't have a lot of expertise in either of the subjects, so I probably wouldn't be the best person for it. And I, that being said, there may be people in the community that have, you know, a specific interest in this or, or experience in it that we could utilize. And I don't know how that plays with an ad hoc, but it's just a thought because it's kind of outside of my wheelhouse.
Okay. Well, Tom's a good writer. So, you know, we could always have him write the grants and stuff.
Somebody would have to tell me what to say, though.
That's all right.
We need somebody, we need a grant, a grant, a grant maven. Certainly, somebody knows the grant scene.
Yeah.
Ray?
Haley writes grants.
What I have to, in, it would streamline it and consistent with our policy, with, with our board policy is to have, is if we could generate a list of grants that are, that are endorsed by this ad hoc committee. And so that there could be easy interface to the board. For example, if, if like, if there's a list of grant opportunities that are, that have been vetted by the ad hoc committee and can go to the board. So all of those can be, can be pre-approved, if you will. Because one of the things that we, we run across here is the, we need to get approval to the, to, from the board before we apply for grants. And that can be problematic sometimes if there's a time crunch attached to it. And so if there's a way that that can be done, that, that could be consistent with our policy where the ad hoc vets a list of grants that we can apply for and then bring that to the board for, so it can be pre-approved. So that staff, you know, if we, if we have an opportunity and if it applies to the project specifically, we can apply for it without having to go through that extra step. So I guess what I'm, what I'm, so what I'm proposing is there's that the ad hoc committee would bring us to the board as the step that's, that's needed. Something to consider.
Yeah, good. All right. Any other discussion? Should we have one or two? Excuse me.
I move, we have one ad hoc committee.
Okay.
I second that.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I just checked with Tim Carmel and currently due to committee rules, the ad, forming an ad hoc committee is not on the agenda and technically you're not supposed to form it today. Sorry to be the messenger on that.
Special meeting. Take two.
Yeah.
I'm looking for the next meeting.
Well, waiting for the next meeting might, might take too long. So I may want to do a special meeting just to, just to get that done.
You had mentioned, I think, possibly bringing in a member or two from the finance committee into an ad hoc committee. Can it be on their agenda? To bring us in?
Yeah, it could be on there. There's, bring it in, but we wouldn't have ours nominated. We wouldn't have our people nominated yet. We have to get that done.
Hmm. So special meeting. So special meeting, I guess, huh?
Yeah, if we want to get it done quickly. Okay.
Thanks, Tim.
Sounds like we're, we're gonna have this, today's meeting, we're gonna set a special meeting on this, on this agenda item, then.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. All right. Um. Since we're gonna have a special meeting, uh, do we want to add anything to that meeting, or anybody else have any future agenda items? Since we're done with regular business at this point, I think.
Well, I had one, one future agenda item is, is relevant to this, the, uh, 3A. Uh, just as a matter of, of bringing things around full circle a little bit, I was curious as to whether that, that list of, how that list of projects, uh, in this presentation, we saw today, for water and sewer, uh, jibes with what the resources, the, at, at the time, I think, called the infrastructure committee came up with, uh, I think it was last year or a year ago. Uh, it might have been a year before that. In its inaugural year is, is a list of priority items, uh, for water and sewer. The, the one, the one question I have is, are we leaving something out in this list that was identified as a priority in that earlier list two years ago? It might be interesting to go back and see, uh, how they jibe, because I see a lot of things obviously that are, you know, uh, the same, but I don't, you know, I just wonder if we, if there's something missing they might have to catch up with.
Okay, so you're talking about basically looking at the CIP again, and?
The CIP is, yeah, the CIP again, see what, how this, how this basically coincides with that.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
We can do that, especially on the water side. I think on the wastewater side, it does jibe pretty good, but.
Yeah, I think it does pretty well, too.
We can, we can look at it again, certainly. All right. Um. The other two things that I had for future, uh, one is developing a CIP list for the general fund. In other words, facilities and resources. What are the projects that they need to have on a list that need to get done? Uh, the vets hall is a good example, right? Street lighting would be a good example of things that need to be on a, uh, general fund CIP list. Uh, so we need to develop that, probably with some help from Carlos and, uh, the chief, and, uh, maybe the pros commission. Um. So that, we need to kick that, we could kick that off. Uh, the other is asset management. We still have kind of put that on the back burner, and maybe it's time to bring that forward and start talking again about how we can identify all of our assets that we've got, and, uh, and get a full and complete list of all those. Um, the, uh, Pam does have a list, but it, it's not complete, and I think now in, in, at some point, we, we should be able to get a complete list of, of all the assets, a- anything that is more than $1,000 or something like that worth, we need, we need to know what it is, where it is, and put a number on it or something, so. Um. So those, those are the other things, so at the, at the special meeting, we could address the review of the CIP, wastewater and water, and form the ad hoc committees. And then at our next regular meeting, we could talk about, uh, the other two, the CIP and the asset management. Does that, that sound reasonable to everybody?
Sounds convenient.
Getting, getting mostly up and down heads.
Yes.
Yes. His not.
Good. All right, so, special meeting date?
Pam, Pam Duffield looks like she might have a question. Sorry to interrupt.
Oh, thank you.
Of course.
Pam?
Hi, sorry, I, for some reason, I can't get my picture to show up, so you just get to hear my voice. So you just said that I had a list of fixed assets. What I have is I have a depreciation list.
Yeah.
So anything that has been fully depreciated is probably not going to be on my list, and that would be ranging in different years. I will not have things on my list under $5,000, because that is our fixed asset, um, threshold, so I, I just wanted to clarify um, what I do have. I'm not gonna have things over $1,000 because those might um, not have been tracked over time. I don't know how long exactly our fixed asset limit has been items over 5,000. So, just so that you're all aware.
Sure, thank you. Yep, and, and we need to discuss exactly what the threshold is and, and how we go about, uh, deciding that and, and what, what goes on the list and what doesn't go on the list and why. So, uh, those will all be topics for that, uh, break of the meeting when we have it.
Okay, and then the finance committee did have a meeting at the end of June, but because we just had a meeting to review the budget a week ago, they decided to cancel the end of June meeting.
Right.
Sorry. I thought that would be important for your discussion.
Yeah. Well, maybe, maybe they can, uh, change their mind and have a special meeting, just to appoint a couple of people to an ad hoc committee, so. Um. Looking at the calendar, would make sense to everybody. Can we do this next week, or do we need to wait another week?
I'm free, I'm free next, same time, this, you know, next Monday.
I can do it.
You too.
I'm not. My secret is next week.
Oh, well, that's important.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Unless they move it again.
What time do you finish?
Paul's from the hospital. Um, so what's, when will you be back in, um, action, so to speak?
Next day. I mean, when the anesthetic's worn off, I guess I can think straight.
So the 23rd, Tuesday, the 23rd?
Yeah, it's fine with me, if it's fine with everybody else.
How does that look for everybody?
Good. We'd have to be 2 o'clock or later.
Okay, we'd be, we'd be talking about 2 o'clock, and hopefully we'll only take maybe in a half an hour, 45 minutes. 2 o'clock next Tuesday on the 23rd. All right, do I hear a motion to have a special meeting at that time of date?
So move.
A second.
All those in favor, raise the right hands. Very good. Pass is 5-0. All right, uh, so we've got future agenda taken care of, and we've got, um, basically, the, the agenda that we, uh, wanted to move forward on and everything, so, um.
One little, I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt it.
Go ahead.
One small question, this is regarding, since I think we're sort of, it's in contact with, uh, Tim Carmel. It's an agenda, uh, question, which was raised, uh, in some emails that I think Haley's aware of with, um, Tim Carmel, about how you account for people in, in these Zoom sessions who are not identified by name, or don't identify themselves by name, so for instance, phone numbers and so forth. Uh, the question I think was raised, and I don't know if we have access to Tim right now, that if someone doesn't sign in, willingly sign in, they don't, they're not, they don't have to be listed as a member of the audience. Now, I'm not talking about ourselves or the staffers, we're talking about people who are observers. And I want to know that what, if you, if you're, except, amenable with a policy where, uh, we either don't list the, um, audience members, as it were, the attendees, or we only list attendees who put their names down in some way, like they, you know, they say, Harry Farmer here, we have three, we have three, um, uh, board members as attendees right now, I don't know, but their name, their names are all there, but when there's somebody with a phone number or something, uh, we just ignore them maybe. And also, also though, there's also this issue, if you don't choose to sign in, you are not required to have your, you're, you're not, your name doesn't have to be there, you know, that, we're not legally required, or we, people aren't really legally required to give their name. So I don't know how we handle that online. I just want to get your, um, maybe your take on that.
Uh, I think we discussed this at, uh, the last board meeting and decided that, uh, we weren't going to list anybody who did not put their name up. And, so if they put their name up, we can list them, but if they don't put their name up, or if they just call in and there's a phone number, we don't worry about it. We don't list that at all.
Okay, so there are four now, I think the Swartzes just came on. Uh, I guess the assumption will be, if you, if you log in, log into a Zoom meeting, and I think there's a way to do it, uh, I don't know if there's a way to do it anonymously or not, but if you log in under your name, you're on the list.
Yeah.
But you're noted, okay?
Yeah, you can change your name pretty easily on this thing. I forget where it is, but it's, but it's up here somewhere.
I just wanted to chime in and add that Tim did see some privacy issues as listing, um, attendees' names in the minutes. And he did clarify that minutes are not supposed to track action, um, where they're supposed to track action and not just list attendees, so he might see this as an issue if we start listing attendees on our minutes.
Okay, is that what he came up with?
What we left off, I mean, I can leave them off the minutes, which you've just, you know, fine.
Yeah, I think we leave them off the minutes until we have a sign-in sheet at the in-person meetings.
Yeah, that kind of answers my question. I know Haley, uh, this is what I was talking about with the emails with Tim. So I can do that, and, uh, and then we go back to the sign-in sheets, we just use the sign-in sheets.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions, comments?
Okay, so, um, we talked about, um, the PG&E thing, and during PG&E's, uh, workshop, they presented us with a bunch of slides from the engineer, kind of detailing a little more about what they're gonna do. If we're gonna go over the CIP list at our next regular meeting, is it, can we try to get those slides so that the committee can see, um, a little more detail of what is involved with these ECMs?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure, we'll try to make it part of the packet.
Okay.
As soon as we can get a hold of those. Did you, uh, forward Brett's email or, or email them at all about it?
Well, I emailed Brett, and I forwarded, um, I think you got a copy of his response, but we haven't heard from MKN, at least I haven't, as far as, um, whether or not we could get those slides or not, but I know that, you know, there's questions about the Stewart Street tanks, and there's diagrams that were part of the presentation, there's questions about the wastewater treatment plant, and there's, there's plenty of diagrams on all of these items that they discussed, and I think it would be helpful for our committee to have them, if we can get them.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll email the guy again and see if I can't get a hold of those. And we'll make it, I mean, hopefully we make it part of the packet and everything, so that you can see that. Okay? All right. Anything else, anyone? We once, twice, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good one.